Good evening. Good evening. Tonight is February 7th. It is 5:32. Welcome to the Facilities Usage and Planning Subcommittee Meeting. We're in the George Rom Little Theater at Brockton High School, and I will go around the room to see if we have a quorum. Mr. Rodriguez.
President.
Ms. Azak.
Here.
I'm here as well, Kathy Aylers, and that gives us a quorum of three, so we're good to go. And first up is the Huntington School, but I think we want to table this, don't we?
No, no, this is something that Dr. Cobb just wants to give an update.
Okay, all right.
There's no, we're not asking for any...
Okay.
...motion or any vote on this, just an update of...
Just a general update.
Yeah, of work he's been doing with the architects and engineers and just it with Deputy Chief Williams as far as what it would take to make the Huntington School into a pre-K center.
Okay, perfect. All right, then I'm going to pass this off to you, Dr. Cobb.
Certainly, yeah. Last time there were a lot of questions regarding the Huntington and the viability of, you know, what we would have to do to bring it up to code to create a pre-K school for, you know, at the capacity of probably up to 500 students, you know, four or 500 students at some point. So, I asked the experts, we took a tour through the building Friday. This is Angelo, say your last name for me.
Curiagadis.
Yeah, he's like our resident architect, if you will. He helps us with engineering and design for all of our construction projects, whether in-house or outside. And then we have Deputy Chief Williams over here, who's our expert, resident expert on building codes. And actually, we walked through with Jim Plouffe, the Building Superintendent for the City of Brockton. And then actually, Tony and I walked through yesterday morning. So, to really get a good idea of what it would take to, let's say, bring it up to a full code, and what happens is, I'll let the experts talk, but as we talked last time, when you had a lot of questions about it, there was, you know, you hit a point where the dollar amount would trigger basically a full upgrade to the building code. And Angelo talked about the Level 1, 2, and 3, and then we can, you know, we can put a better price tag on it for you, as we were discussing last time. So, it can be significant. So, you know, with that, I'll turn it over to, if you have questions, or I'll turn it over to Angelo first, and then I'll certainly, we'll take your questions as we go along. I'll jump in my end of it.
I've reviewed the school a couple of times.
Pull the mic closer.
I've reviewed the school a couple of times with Dr. Cobb. And we walked through last week with the Fire Chief Williams and Jim Plouffe, the Building Commissioner. Some of my concerns are substantial in that there's a lot of hazardous material in there. There's mold, there's asbestos, there's lead, there's shellac, all hazardous materials on the baseboard, the wood trim, the doors, the door casings. There's a lot of material that is unrated, like fire, the doors that are existing in the classrooms and the separation corridor doors. I did not see any fire rated labels on them. And with today's event at the Brockton Hospital, that's a huge, that's a huge life safety issue. The elevator is antiquated. This is quick observations that I saw in my reviews of it very quickly. A lot of the floors are squeaky and creaky, and they have carpet on them or tile that you have to be removed and remove the floor and then put a new sub straight down and then refloor back up, as well as encapsulating all the hazardous material, possibly getting it abated beforehand to do that. Ceilings are significant in height. I don't know if the heating systems are adequate, that will provide an efficient heating system for the building. Electrical, again, we have to review that in more detail. We didn't see what that was. Plumbing issues are, again, old cast iron pipe and things like that, so they're not code compliant at this point. But once we start tapping into those pieces, and we start pulling wire, and do things beyond cosmetic to bring it up to code, it triggers it up into the third level, which is a sprinkler system, fire suppression. I know you have a new roof and you have some windows in there that aren't too old, and that's fine, but we have so much volume in that building. The volume is enormous, especially up on that third floor. If you've ever toured the building, it's virtually two stories up in the attic space by itself. I mean, it's a great, grand old building, but not probably useful for a school system, for a school program. My, just my opinion, you know, clearly. And it depends on how much money you want to expend on this, but Level 1 would be a cosmetic approach, probably doing some abatement, getting rid of the asbestos, shellac, and things like that, that are really at the human scale, human level, and making it safe and for children. And then you'd be painting it, putting carpet and new treatments on the floor and stuff like that, components like that. And then, you know, if you start pulling wires, when you do pre-K, you need to have a bathroom between the classrooms for the children, because they can't be left unattended, and you need more attendants if you have to bring them to the bathroom to watch the other children. So, you provide, like we did at the Brockton Day Nursery, there's a small bathroom that's between the classrooms, and they share it, and it's open for view, so there's children unattended. So, it's a safety issue, and especially in today's society, we have to watch those and be cognizant of those things. But as we move through, we'll be tapping into the existing plumbing system, and what does that do to us at that point? Handicap access is huge in that building. There's an elevator, but it's antiquated and it's small, it's centrally located in the building, and the only way to get to it, if you handicap, is through a basement entrance through a storage area, which is not acceptable by code. It's just not acceptable egress or entry for handicap access. So, it would involve a new elevator, probably at the front of the building, and a new drop-off area, so it's more accessible to the building, so the building becomes a functional space, not just a patch of components that you try to put together and call it a classroom. I'm not trying to design it in my brain, I'm just trying to bring points of issues that I've seen that will have to be addressed at one point or another. But once you get beyond the cosmetics of it, it triggers different levels. So, this Level 1, which is the basic cosmetic approach you'd take to it, the second level would be life safety, handicap accessibility, things like that. And handicap accessibility might kick in at the first level, too, because you truly have to have an accessible school. And the third level is when you're pulling wires and things like that, and you take your volume of about 60-plus, I think...
67.
60-something thousand square feet at a number of $155 to $165, I'm sorry, $650 a square foot, you're up to 60, 44 million dollars in rough dollars to bring that up to the third level. And from there, you work down to, you know, some level of renovation. But, you know, efficiency systems, there's no insulation, they have cupboards in front of heating systems that block the heat now, so there's a lot of, there's a lot of inefficiency that's in the building, and these are things that need to be addressed. I've offered to do a floor plan of two classrooms and cost that out and see what the bathrooms would be and what level we can go to, and how much cosmetic work is affected in that, in those two classrooms, just to make them usable, and what the capacity would be of those two classrooms, to see if you can get the capacity you're looking for in the building. The gymnasium is a virtual useless component. It has suffered for years of neglect and water infiltration over the years through the wall, the roof, and things like that, so it's not cost-effective at all to just renovate that, cosmetically or otherwise. Very quickly, I would need to bring a structural engineer in, but I'm sure what we see in there, where they added, they took space away, not pedestrian, but gallery space away from that room initially and created bathrooms, so that, you know, if you look at the forensics of that building, you can see what was done there. It was, it was a grand old building at one time. Has it outlived its usefulness as an educational facility? I'm not, you know, that's for you to say. I'll field any questions you have.
So, Angelo, in your opinion, the, to be able to have it as a pre-K center would be a Tier 3?
If you were bringing it all up to code, yes, it would be a Tier 3. Yeah, it would trigger those elements, electrical...
So, it'd be close to about 40, 44 million?
Forty, forty, a few million dollars, right?
Okay.
Yeah.
So, my 83-year-old mother graduated from the Huntington School. So, I'm...
123 years old.
We've suffered two major fires over the years down there. The building's seen its better days.
Yes.
I graduated from the Keats School, I graduated from the same type of school.
Sure.
But the building that's in there now, it's in rough shape.
Yeah.
It needs a lot of improvement, especially if you bring in little kids in there. Fire safety-wise, we need new fire alarms throughout. When Angelo talks about the tiered construction, those are tiers within the building code.
Right.
You have Tier 1, paint and paint book. Tier 2, you're changing the kitchen cabinets. Tier 3, you're doing a lot of work. Tier 3 is going to trigger a new fire alarm system, it's going to trigger a sprinkler system throughout the building, new exits, new fire doors, the whole...
Right.
...building will be coming in.
It's a lot of money to spend, but we'd want to make it safe for the kids that are going to be in there. Sure. So, I'm a firm believer that anything can be fixed up, it just depends on how big your pocketbook is to do it, and is it really worth spending the money in that particular school, where we were talking off the cuff, but if you're going to spend that much money, you've got this big, beautiful parking lot behind it, build a new school at that location, tear the old one down, and, you know, go from there. To be honest with you, that's the thing.
Which we cannot do at this location, because you just put the MSBA, just put the roof on the building, so we're kind of, we have to work with it for a while, so we can't just demolish it. We may look at that at other sites, but not at this particular location.
For a while, like with the new roof, like what's the timeline on that?
I think they expect to keep it over at least 10 years, that's not kind of education. It doesn't have to have children, but has to serve a function of the school. It has to be out of the school, out of functions of useful office space. Engagement is things that can be used for that we need to give it.
Does, can it be administrative, or does it have to be, does there have to, does there have to be any teaching and learning in that site, or could it be solely for administrative?
It can be solely for teaching.
As long as it's school system administration.
Mr. Rodriguez.
That's part of the school system.
Oh.
Sorry. So, it would, you can, it has to be at least for 10 years because of the MSBA, and you could, obviously, we lease in some buildings now, you could reallocate some office space to open up more space in some of the schools we currently have, to make it, you know, give them more space, because sometimes it's difficult finding office space across the district, so, you know, we could, as long as it's being used by the school department for some function that is connected to education, it's, the MSBA's not going to have a problem.
Anybody have any questions so far?
I mean, it's served, I mean, it's serving, again, with this is, we have the Huntington School, I mean, so it fits, like, I don't want people to think that we need to clear out the whole school now.
Yeah.
You know, it has, it's inspected every year, and, but we've been talking about a new location for the Huntington School, you know, this, for a while now, so the actual students that are there now, the therapeutic school.
Do we know how many, what the population is in there?
It's about 38 students.
So, and I'm just throwing this out there, just brainstorming, so if we move those 38 students again, because they've already been moved to here once, right? Is this their second move?
No, they were moved, yeah, they were moved here from the Garter, because the state kept citing the district for a long time, so back in, I think it was five years ago now, they moved to the Garter, I mean, moved from the Garter to the Huntington, because the Garter didn't have a gym.
Yep.
And it didn't have an elevator, so it had to go into a building that had that, all of that, and also the Gilmore, because it was all elementary students, just didn't work anymore, because there's not enough bathrooms, so it was moved to the Huntington School, which was elementary for years, moved to the Gilmore. And the Gilmore was moved to the Barrett-Russell.
So, I, maybe I don't understand this, but it's 67,000 square foot of space, and we have 38, just 38 students in there?
Yeah, and then there's other programs, there's the Pathways Program is there for students who, that need a dropout, and we try to get back in. We have a mentoring program there for kids who go there for 30 or 45 days for, in lieu of suspensions, they're there. I think, I think, yeah, so pretty much three-quarters, 75% of the building's being used.
Okay.
And as we, remember, last year I had to redesign the Huntington, so it basically kind of took a lot of students and teachers out of the Huntington School, and...
Yeah.
Our plan was to try to find another location for them.
So, I think my biggest question right now is, if the Huntington is not a possibility for pre-K, which I think is what actually brought us here to begin with, because none of us were comfortable, I'm not going to speak for anybody else, I know I wasn't comfortable with it being up at Westgate. If it was, if it's up at Westgate and it's a temporary fix, I'm okay with that, because it's temporary, but I just have a hard time having our littlest ones not in a school environment. I mean, that's just something that I'm, like, for me, I'm having a hard time with, and so I guess my question is, what is the alternative beside Westgate? Can we re, is there anywhere else?
Yeah, we can talk about other things to, because the Porta-Chester Building is still in play, so basically, that would create a domino effect for different buildings to change.
Oh, yeah, that's right, to repurpose.
Right, so we'd have to, you know, once we figure out that, we would be able to, then be a domino effect of where we can move people without having pre-K at Westgate. And there's something else on the agenda I was going to bring up as something I'm going to approach the city with as a option for a new pre-K center.
Ooh, okay, good.
That could be, hopefully, maybe come to fruition in the next two years, so city-owned property and...
Yep.
But the reason number two is on there, adult learning, it's pretty much, so Jim has evaluated kind of both locations, they're pretty much in the same boat with, they're both pretty much the same age. Jim, you know more about it, second.
The upgrade, actually Angelo and I walked through that one as well, so the assessment is the same, it's an older building, it's really, that building only has like 39,000 square feet, so it's half the space that the actual Huntington Building is, so it really wouldn't give us, first of all, the square footages that we need for, you know, 20 to 25 pre-K classrooms. It serves its purpose well with the adults that are there in the community, but as far as triggering, and then the same thing, it would trigger probably like a Level 3 rehabilitation for the building renovations, so, you know, again, so it's probably half of the price of the Huntington Building, about, you know, 25,000, a million dollars or so, to completely rehab that one and bring it up to the Level 3 code requirements.
I have a question, but I want, Ms. Azak had a question, I know she's been waiting.
It's okay. So, we just, we didn't meet too long ago to go over this, so my thought process is to invest that kind of money into the Huntington is just, that's a lot of money to put into a building of that age. I mean, if we can still use the building and utilize it and have other programs, you know, given the age of the students, you know, they're very young, they're under the age of six. You know, one thing, you can't have lead, I mean, that's, yeah, you're going to have to do lead the whole place. So, putting all that money in, going into it, that just, to me, that's a lot of money, where you can just go purchase other buildings for...
Right.
Five million, four million, I mean, not that we have the money to spend, but that's a lot of money to put into a building, and the renovations are going to take a while to go through, so...
Probably three years at best, you know, efficiently, three years.
So, it just makes more sense to look at an alternative, as far as another location. As far as, I mean, I've toured, I've been to the Huntington quite a few times, I think the third floor is pretty, pretty cool, the attic.
It's cool.
That's pretty awesome.
Not for school.
Yeah, I mean, it's just pretty cool to think years ago, they actually had classes all the way up there.
You can see the basketball court.
Yeah, the chalkboard with everyone signing it, it's pretty cool, but I also, you know, took another drive by the Westgate location, and I just don't see how we're not going to add a lot of traffic to that area, drop-off and pickup, and I can see us running into a problem with the tenants, like the dialysis center behind, you know, that's a lot of traffic in and out of there. So, we might be okay with the building, but the tenants around us, we're going to have an issue with, because there's parking right there, and to be able to loop them around. And, you know, and I heard from quite a few people after our last meeting, also questioning, you know, drop-off, pickup, it's just a lot when you're talking about 200 to 400 students. Yes, there's little buses, we're trying to make things work. I would rather find a location, rather than finding like a Band-Aid, find a location, invest in it, and that's going to be the pre-K center, rather than moving everybody all over the place, you know, if that's possible.
Yeah, I would, I agree. And we could use Westgate for some swing space as we plan, and try to figure something else out. I mean, I'd rather, like, if, if the city doesn't purchase it, I'd rather get out of there, rather than continue to stay, so stop paying lease payments, and then start to put that money towards a more permanent situation where we're not paying a lease, and we're putting it more towards a bond that actually has a city asset that actually makes sense.
Definitely, that, that would be the route, I would also recommend, is long-term, rather than just, you know, temporary fixes, but again, we have to still work with Huntington. I mean, we're only, what, one year into it?
Yeah, which is fine, there's plenty of things we can, there's plenty of options.
Yeah, it's a huge school, I believe it holds 500. I could be wrong, so that, it's a huge school.
Yeah, they're large classrooms, I mean, they really are, but we could use them for older students or some other program, but...
It's just not going to fit the needs of our pre-K right now, and what we need it for, but I'm sure we can find something else, another use for it. And like the superintendent mentioned, there's going to be a lot of moving parts with some other locations that we're looking at, so it might free up another, another location.
So, I just want to, if you have any questions for Angelo or Deputy Williams, I promise I'll make it go early.
I just have one question, I just have one question.
Yeah, and he had a pretty busy day.
Yeah, I know, he was, he just left, I know, I know, fair enough, very fair.
Well, if you have any other questions for them, I'd just like to, with the ALC...
I don't know if this is, I don't know if this is for them, but how much, how much space do we actually need for 20 to 25 pre-K classrooms? Like, do we know what, how much square...
Probably 40, 40, 50,000.
About 40,000 square feet.
Forty to 50,000, okay. That's all I have. Thank you very much, gentlemen, for joining us, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anytime. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Williams.
Angelo, free, free to take something easy.
Yes, please.
Take care.
That's terrible. Heading down the Cape.
Mr. Rodriguez, did you have a question?
Yeah, I had the pleasure of, is this one?
I know, they seem really low. Yeah.
Nice tour of the, of the school, and there is a lot of work to be done in that, in that building, even just the doors going into the classrooms, I thought I was walking into a closet. It's that bad, but, I mean, like with the investment with, you know, like I told Dr. Cobb, with, you know, the brand-new windows, you have a brand-new roof, I know the initial plan was to make this the site for the pre-K, you know, I just question, you know, how did we just let this building get into this, you know, this shape that it is, and where is, you know, our master plan of actually addressing all the buildings that we have in the city? To not have it as a school, because it's right there in the neighborhood, is, you know, it's kind of disservice to those, to those residents, but I would like to get like an actual hard number analysis, you know, what is it going to cost for us to put that elevator in, what's it going to cost for us to get the sprinkler system in, the whole nine yards, to see the actual cost, you know, I know you could say it's 600, $600 per square feet, but what does that really entail, where most of it, it's, you know, a lot of it is cosmetics, I mean, even from seeing the bookshelves, you know, covering the heating system on this, like, this is, this is nuts. But, you know, if we can get that in...
We actually can pull up the master plan that was done under Kathy and Bill Coppin, that it's a whole master plan the city did, right, Aldo?
Yes, from Arrow Street.
Arrow Street did a facilities master plan for the, every, every city building.
Yeah, and it's, you know...
So, we could just pull that up.
You know, it's even with the, you know, the stairs, with the support beams that are kind of rotted out, it's from repointing the stonework outside, so to actually get like a hard number, like, this is what the elevator's going to cost for us to get this done, I mean, the gym has to be completely gutted out, I mean, the floors is, you could just bounce on it, so, and if we can get that, you know, that'd be great, I mean, obviously, you know, your team is going to put something together to see where we can find a location for the pre-K.
Yeah, I think we can come up with different plans that we can maybe...
We can have Angelo go the next step, which is he would have to actually bring it in the structural engineers, electrical engineers into the building.
Yeah, let's look, first, let's look at Arrow Street and see, maybe we can get them to come back cheap, because they did this, Aldo, we can probably bring them back to do a presentation on what they did. I mean, the city paid $5 million for that plan, and it's supposed to be good, it's a 20-year master plan, but again, and like, I go back to what Mr. Rodriguez, the reason why the building is like, because...
Budget cuts.
We don't, we don't get the money to make these drastic changes to, I mean, when you're a school system in a city that's been doing nothing but cutting, so last thing you do, and again, we always try to remind people, we as Chapter 70 money can maintain buildings, but the kind of work that buildings need has to be capital money from the city side, and they always struggle with the budget, so at the end of the day, you still got schools like West, North, South, East, all need new carpets, new wind, I mean, new ceilings, I mean, they all can, we upgrade when we can, but this Arrow...
Fire alarm, I mean, it's master, I mean, these are capital projects.
So, is the Arrow Street plans, that outlines every single school in the district and what needs to be done?
They were here for two years.
Oh, my God.
I actually have electronic copies, I can get, like, I can send to you if you wish.
They were here for two years.
It's comprehensive.
Bill Coppin, Kathy Smith kept asking, and Bill worked together on this, and then Bill said, we're going to do it. They had to put it out to bid, and it went to Arrow Street, who does this work out of Boston, and they ended up putting every city building in, because, I mean, Ed can tell you just some of their firehouses, who are, you know, that have needed to be replaced for 30 years, and...
Station 1 was built in, I think, 1886, and in 1922, the chief wrote in his annual report that the station needs to be replaced. And maybe by 2025, it will be.
Oh, my gosh.
So, I think we should resurface that and actually, instead of spending more money, I think, you know, basically, did have to update with, with modern-day prices, obviously. When did that report come out, Aldo? 15, 16?
That's what I thought.
16?
I think so, yes.
Yeah, so what we...
I don't want to pay them $30,000 to tell us they can do it for 30 million instead of 44.
No, 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 I'm just talking about, yeah, I just, I mean, if they can just come back and present about the facility master plan, just so it comes up again, because I don't think it'd be, not only helpful for the school department, it'd be helpful for the city as well, they did every city building.
Oh, yeah.
No, I mean, it makes sense, I mean, to spend, if we're looking at a price tag of 40 million, it doesn't make sense to dump all that money in there, you're better off getting a brand-new facility and getting everything up to code.
And then using money to do other work.
But the thing is, is right now, is, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, we're going to be two years behind the ball of actually approving, you know, the added pre-K and kindergarten full-time, because we don't have the location.
Right, yeah, space.
So, I, so how many actually classrooms from this point on till we actually find...
So, we have, for full, universal pre-K, we would need to add close to 70 more classrooms right now for next year in the, so right now, the biggest push is, we need seats for students who are, who pre-qualify under special education. So, as you know, we have to evaluate students starting at age 3 for early intervention, and then if, when they're 4, and it calls for them to have a pre-K seat, or if they fall into that 5, they don't turn, you know, how we changed the date, you know, that, legally, you do not have to offer regular ed students a pre-K seat, that's something to pay, but legally, for students with disabilities or have been pre-diagnosed for services, they have to have, if they get, if they get tested through the IEP process and they say they need a placement, you have to find them a pre-K seat, and you can't have, it has to be an inclusion, so it's not, you can't have a separate special education pre-K classroom, you want, it has to be, so you have to have peers as well, so, you know, so, I'm hoping that the state comes up with money, I mean, it's great, they're going to put money towards universal pre-K, but with all the, like Mr. Rodriguez said, the issue is, where's the money for the space? Because every district, every district is dealing with, they, we all want pre-K and universal, because it obviously helps our students, especially students with disabilities and English language learners, but it's a, it's a battle with space, and it's better having pre-K centers, so I've visited the George, which has pre-K classrooms there, they have, I think, eight. It's a lot of time that the principal and assistant principal have to take, dealing with pre-K in the building, when it, when they also have K to 5 that, you know, they need to focus on as well, so...
Yep.
As you can see at the Barrett-Russell, the pre, a regular pre-K only setting is the best...
Yeah.
...situation, it's just, again, we are behind because space is an issue, and...
Do we have an idea what the carry-in number in the fall is going to be for those special ed students?
So, I know, and by the fall, we have to open at least 25 to 30 classrooms.
Classes, okay.
Yeah.
And how many are actually up at Westgate?
Oh, right now, we didn't put any up there, I mean, they probably could get about 18.
Yeah, 18 and 20.
18 in there.
Okay.
Thanks, Deputy.
My question is, okay, at Westgate, I mean, I told the property, when it comes to restrooms in between the classrooms, are we going to have to go in there and do these renovations? Because there is no...
No, we can't.
Restrooms, um, in between the classrooms.
Yeah, we, we put the platforms, I mean, there are bathrooms that are large, you know, boys and girls bathrooms here. Because it was a school, it was a Lincoln Tech school at one time. So we would have to make adjustments, they can step up and use the toilets and, and step up for the, so you can use the sinks and wash your hands. But there are common toilet, boys and girls rooms in the, in the corridor, not in the classrooms.
So I think there's some options we could have, but I talk about them publicly, because we don't want to talk, you know, when you put something out there that somebody, something's going to move. And then it spreads out there, moving all the schools everywhere, so.
Yeah, no, understood.
So we'd rather, like, just look into it deeper and then figure out. But I agree with you, Westgate is not the ideal location for pre-K.
So my question is, sorry.
No?
If we do approve to have Westgate as a temporary location to get these classrooms, because we are behind the ball, what are we looking for? What's the timeframe? Do we, have we looked at, is it going to be two years, is it going to be three years?
I'm hoping by the following September, we would have, if we work on a plan, uh, which is, I'll wait till we get to number four. I would hope that we could get that done within a year and a half. So basically, by September of twenty-four.
Gotcha.
There's something, we could have another new pre-K center that's owned by the city.
Well, I think that, I'm so sorry, Mr. Rodriguez, you done?
I was going to say, I think that the issue with the Huntington, or, well, the issues with the Huntington are the issues with the Huntington. But I think for the most of us, the issues with the Huntington were mostly relevant, because it, it felt like our only option of having the pre-K there and not at Westgate. But if we have another option where it's even better than what the Huntington would be, and we don't have to spend forty-four million dollars on renovations today, and it can be done in a year and a half, that seems ideal. Because the Huntington seems like the best option if we could upgrade it. But if we can't, I'm with Mr. Rodriguez and Ms. Azak, and with you, I agree. I think that Westgate is a good temporary fix, but it just, it's not sustainable to be the end-all, be-all for pre-K, where we want to go.
Right.
Yep.
But I think if we, I think if we can have further conversation, because I think if we, um, once, again, we've toured the Port of Chester building, but it's still out there, because, you know, bid's been put out there. So, um, I think that would free up some different options, to give us some different options if we end up with that building.
Okay, that's great. Anybody else have any other questions in regards to the Huntington School renovation update? Ms. Azak?
So as far as the Huntington being a pre-K, it'd be around forty-some odd million dollars. But to just keep it and use it as is, and just maybe do some minor cosmetic work, that's doable, and we can utilize it.
Yeah, because it's inspected every year.
Yeah, I just don't want people watching thinking like, oh, my God, the Huntington can't be used right now.
What we're talking about is, if you start construction and any of that stuff's disturbed...
Yeah.
Then you can't be anybody, but nothing's disturbed. So it's inspected every year by the fire department, by the building department, it has to have a occupancy permit. Every year, we go through that every summer, um, and it's fine to be occupied, it's just that when you're turning it into a pre-K center...
It has to meet certain requirements, yeah.
But again, like you, you both said, it needs a lot of cosmetic work, it needs carpets, it needs doors.
Yeah, same ceiling, but we're not, it triggers when you start to do upgrades, when you, penetration through walls or, or, or ceilings or anything, then that's when you may disturb. Things that need to be remediated till the price goes up, and then it kind of takes off.
It's just, it's given the, um, age bracket of the students that we're considering at the moment, it just doesn't work for the pre-K.
Right.
It'll work for, for other things.
It'll still be a school department building, absolutely, we'll...
I mean, it's, again, it's, it's a very old building, um, solid building, so it does need...
Then it's been, always been important to the neighborhood.
Absolutely, absolutely.
For adults and older students, we can, it's certainly useful, absolutely is.
I mean, we can look to grow adult ed at night, I mean, there's, there's, because we actually, I mean, we were thinking of if, um, if the adult learning center was any cheaper to turn into pre-K, which it's not. It's a little bit cheaper, but maybe six million cheaper, then we would have, they would go to the Huntington, and then we could maybe renovate the adult learning center, which is second. But it, it's the same situation with how much work you have to do to it. But we could look at expanding adult learning opportunities.
I mean, you have South right there, too bad. I mean, if they needed a couple of extra workshop rooms or something, I mean, it's within walking distance.
Right.
Um, utilize it with the middle school in that area, offer, you know, different programs for some of the students, it's not a bad idea.
Good point.
Um, you can walk right to it.
Yeah, because South is always crunched for space.
Yeah.
So there, there could be some classrooms and stuff.
Yeah, just something, I mean, if they needed some extra, you never know, um, art, music, whatever they need, um, because again, you can walk right to it.
And the goal would be to keep Westgate temporarily, because like Aldo is not a fan of leasing. And try to put that money towards something that's permanent and owned by the city.
Yeah. No, thank you.
Okay, any other questions in regards to number one? All right, let's move on to number two, which is the Adult Learning Center renovation update. Dr. Cobb, I'm assuming this is you as well?
Um, like I mentioned already, it's pretty much the same situation as the Huntington, you know, depending on what you want to use it for. It, to the purpose right now for adult education, really don't have to do anything. We've, we recently spent a great deal of money to upgrade the, the audio visual system in the, in the auditorium. You have some office spaces over there, we moved, uh, what's the program we moved over there, like the assessment?
Oh, it's, um...
Couple of office spaces.
Couple of office spaces, we moved.
Um, but that school, it serves the purpose in the community, we just put in a new marquee, the electronic marquee for the neighborhood. So we have one on both sides of the city now, east and west. So, you know, but to, again, to go in and look at it for a pre-K school, like you said, it, it triggers the same things that the Huntington does, you know, at a smaller scale. But it's a smaller building, you know, it, it's, it's almost half the size of the Huntington building in square feet. About thirty-nine, Huntington is about sixty-seven, so, so you don't get the amount of classrooms that we would need for, for a pre-K school. And again, it's, it's about the same cost per square foot, six hundred and fifty dollars. So you're looking at, you know, twenty-five, twenty, twenty-five million dollars to rehab that into a pre-K school. And the same, it's, it's same two to three years to, to get it done, because it, we'd have to go out to bid, we'd have to hire a general contractor, project manager, and they'd have the subcontractors. And it's, and once you get started, it's probably a year, a year and a half before you start, and then a year and a half to finish. So, it's, old buildings kind of, they serve the purposes, leave them alone.
Purpose, oh, yes. Mustafa, the director, he, they love it there.
Yeah.
No, they really.
So they're happy there?
About, I want to say eight, nine, ten years ago, we added Parkin space, because it was, um, Parkin was really tight. So we were able to take some land that the city owned in the back and add about thirty more spots, uh, so that kind of helped. So it kind of, you know...
It's still tight for Parkin though, because, you know, when you're considering young students, you know, and pick up and drop off with parents and, and the small buses, it, it, and you have the pluff right across the street. So it really gets, if you had bussing on both sides of the street with pick-up and drop-offs, it's, it's, it's quite a bit.
It works well for adult learning center for the needs, there's really nothing that needs to be done, because we've done...
As it is now, it's in pretty good shape, you know, for the adult education, we painted and repaired the classrooms and put carpets in most of them. So we really don't need to do anything there now, it's in pretty good shape, so.
Okay, good. Anybody have any questions in regards to number two, the Adult Learning Center renovation update? Okay, moving on to number three, which is three sixty-five Westgate Drive update.
That's basically, we just put on hold.
Yep.
Because we know we don't want to put the pre-K center there, so.
Yeah. But what are we going to do about the fall?
I think that we have some plans.
We, okay.
Yeah, if...
Okay, if moving P...
The other building works out, I think we can...
Okay, gotcha, okay. Does anybody have any questions in regards to Westgate Drive? I think we've kind of talked this one to death in regards to the fact that we all agree that it's not the perfect spot, it'd be a good time space. But, um, it's not really anything that we're all looking for, to be, for any kind of long-term.
It's really a pressure relief valve.
Yeah.
We have to take all these students in for the fall, it gives us some, some option that we can look at others as well. But at least that's, it's an option that may be on the table, so, you know.
Understood. Okay, moving on to number four, the Shaw School.
So this was something I actually talked to Ms. Azak about it, um, I've talked to Aldo and Jim about it. So you have the Shaw School, which is the old head start.
Yep.
Still, we control it, um, because we used it for old storage. It's now been condemned by the fire department that they don't want anybody going in and out of there. So we've spoken to Mayor Sullivan about, um, there's demolition money in the city budget, um, to have it demolished. It's a beautiful piece of land. You have the school, which is there now, to the left, you have, I think, two or th- two tennis courts with an old playground, which is all grown in. And then you have the huge park in the back, which is a softball, baseball field. So my ask for the mayor is to basically have it knocked down. Aldo is pricing out, uh, large space metal mil- space metal buildings that can be then built out. And, you know, they're, they're space metal, because, so they're cheaper than brick and mortar. But they make them look like, you know, they put brick, and they put a nice entrance, and, um, so Aldo, you got some, can I come up to a microphone? So the goal is to be basically, as you, space build, space metal, oh, my God, I can't speak. Space metal buildings can go up very quickly.
Yeah.
And, um, could then serve as a pre-K center with up to twenty-five to thirty classrooms, if you put a building of fifty thousand square feet. And then obviously, you make offices and space, and you then put money towards a new playground for that age level. And you put some money to maybe do something with the playground in the back, because, you know, I don't even know if anybody uses that for games.
Yeah, it's overgrown right now.
Not sure, the only thing I remember was, uh, the farm, some guy wanted to do a farm.
Yeah, somebody wanted to use for a farm, but that, I think, we said, yeah, go ahead and grow. Yeah, that never came, um, so, so Aldo, what?
So I priced out a forty thousand square foot building, and rough numbers for the foundation, for the steel building, for some build-out on the inside for classrooms. Little over four million, like four point two, after listening to Lieutenant Williams with the sprinklers and the fire doors, probably closer to five million. Then you'd have to pave the parking lot, you'd have to build a play area outside. So still, even if it's six or seven million complete, it's still a lot cheaper than any other option that we have. And the nice thing is, you see a lot of these kindergartens now out there that have the brick facade, like, like Superintendent was saying. And it's a steel building, they put a nice brick facade on the front of it, but the rest of it's all functional as a, as classrooms. So, um, you don't really want to put a second floor on, if you did, maybe it'd be for offices, but you want to keep all the children on the first floor in a building like that. So, um, we're looking at the area now, we think maybe it's about four acres, because, you know, forty thousand square foot building, one floor is a pretty large building. So, um, we'd see how it could fit. But, um, I've sent emails out to a couple of companies so that they can get back, and as we get more serious, I can get a, a more firm price. Concrete price changes every day, that's a huge slab you're putting down there, so. It's still the steel. So it's a steel, exactly. But I think, I still think it's one of our options.
Would it be put directly on a concrete slab?
Yes, usually you put a concrete slab down, and you've got, like, a foundation wall that's there, and the steel frame goes off the foundation wall. So, um, you know, I don't know if there's any rock or ledge or anything under that building, that site. But this is stuff that, uh, we would, you know, look into when we do it. But again, overall, if we are going to own the building, it's going to be a twenty or thirty-year bond to pay it off. Even if it's eight million dollars, it shouldn't be that big of a, um, an expense compared to what we're paying out now on leasing buildings, so.
And what it would cost to redo the Huntington or anywhere else?
Correct.
Ms. Azak, did you have a question?
I did. So, um, that's a great location. I know a few things over the past few years have always come up, and I know the old Shaw School, um, it's such a great piece of land now. The only thing is, is are we too close to Botera? Will that cause any issues, having a school that close to, I believe that's a dispensary? So don't we have to be a certain amount of feet away from there?
I, I would have to ask.
Okay, if not, we could always build a little further out.
Where, what location, where is it? The mayor wanted a dispensary. No, but where is it?
It's right across from Walgreens, the old...
The old bank.
The old bank.
You got the Shaw, then you got...
It's on Sinister Street. LDOs and all that ones.
I think there's a house.
Oh, my God.
Yes. I just want that.
The thing is, is that when the city approved that, they should have realized that there was a school there. Regardless if it's open or not, it's still a school. So they made that mistake of actually approving that.
But we could always, given the size of the lot, we could always, if they're going to tear that down, go a little further out, if it, if we do run into any issues.
They could make a variance for that, saying that it's, this is our doing, not theirs.
Okay.
But, I mean, it's also pre-K. I mean, if it was, we were going to put middle or high school kids there, I'd be more concerned.
Yeah, I just thought it was...
But those kids would be picked up, either brought on vans, if they're...
They're not, they're not walking.
... disabilities, or their parents have to tra- then usually nobody walking, obviously, to pre-K. So it might help us as well. I mean, I'd be more concerned if it was middle or high school kids, but, I mean, I don't know, like, there's a lot of these throughout the city now, so I don't know how many places you could go where you're not, close to one.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we don't run into any issues.
But we'll look into the regulations.
Yeah, because I thought it was just a general, um, requirement.
Right.
It didn't, it just, because it's a school.
Right.
So, I mean, that, that's great, and we're looking at renovating, and the, the dollar amount for renovating, to me, just putting the, those buildings, one, they can go a lot faster, and you can customize them, and they're beautiful.
It's an asset, and that piece of property is an asset, because the city cannot sell it.
If you look at the YF on West Chester Street, that, that, it's not the same, pretty much.
You can't tell. What is, what is the lifespan for those, like, how long do they normally?
Oh, man.
Oh, yeah.
My opinion, if you have an A-framed roof compared to our flat roofs, that A-framed roof is thirty years, easy. It's our flat roofs that kill us.
Yeah, I was talking to the guy owns, I go to the Lake, um, uh, my daughter played a tennis match at Lakeville, and that's a space, big, huge space built, with like six tennis courts. And it's been there for fifty years, the same.
Which is, it's a good investment.
The only thing about those roofs is they work to the roof.
You can go over them again, or you could take it off and replace the panels, you're not taking out shingles or anything.
I know, usually, look at Skate Town.
Oh, gosh.
Yeah, it's been there forever, I know.
I was skating there at twelve, and that thing is still there.
Yeah, it's been there forever. But I just want to add to your point though, Joyce, you know, it, as far as the dispensary there, the schools are, like, the school's there already, so we're, we're already in the school zone. They're the one that, that is an issue, it's with them, not with us, because we...
No, no, it's fine, I just don't want to run into any, or have them run into any issues with us, yeah, it's good.
Yeah, that makes sense, but...
You've got to be good with your neighbors as well.
Mr. Rodriguez?
So we're looking at just doing one floor, not two floors, um...
It, if we could, we could probably look at two floors for, but then you'd, you'd have to act, the expense of an elevator. And, right, and whether, you know, it's good to keep pre-K on one floor, so they're not going upstairs, but we could obviously price out both.
You could maybe do two, you know, smaller buildings and have them connected, and see, you know, instead of one large building, they go up two floors.
You have to see what the lot lays out.
Yeah, but if it does, if we, I mean, we'd price out a second floor, too.
Then you have to put an elevator.
Because you never can hurt for space.
Yeah. All right, you mean the price tag of forty million? I mean, how many turf fields does the city can get with forty million?
Yeah, it's not going to happen.
Another one behind the Shaw, too.
Yeah, not going to happen.
And, and the city cannot, they, they looked into, when they were selling all the old schools, they had them on the market. And I remember when Bill was the mayor, he actually looked into putting that on the market, and, because a lot of people were interested in buying that because of the piece of land. And you, city cannot, because you have to have so much play space, um, and, uh, green space for, uh, compared to how many residents in each area. And the Shaw fell in that, that, uh, regulation, so that cannot be sold for commercial use. So it has to stay currently as that playground is, and it would be perfect for a pre-K.
It'll also bring, sorry, it'll also bring, um, rather than have an empty building, bring more to Ward Five, which is my, my bordering, um, ward. So, you know, we have a lot of families, and it's great to have one location, and then a lot of them will probably end up going to Baker or Brookfield and those areas. So it gets the students familiar, plus we get them into our school system early, and it's easier for them to adapt. So, I mean, the pre-K program is wonderful, and I'm sure it's going to help a lot of families, um, in that location, i- i- it is a great location. And I always knew from the builders I've worked with, they always said, when you have the one level, that's actually more expensive than building up, it's just the foundation. So I don't know how it is with the metal buildings, but building up should be no problem, cost, I mean, it should be less cost-wise. buildings, but building up should be no problem, cost, I mean, it should be less cost-wise, where it's just the ba, the, the, the foundation is, is what the huge expense is, because everyone's like, oh, one level living is going to be less expensive, no, it's actually more expensive than, than building up, because of the foundation. So it'd be nice to have that.
Right, my concern is that with new codes now, do they, do they require two elevators on each end of the building?
Yeah.
Are you going to have to have five sets of staircases, because depending on the occupancy of the building, how many staircases you're going to need in there, just all that kind of follows, so.
Yeah.
But again, if, if we go that route, if they'll take the building now, we'll get the estimates, we'll even talk to, you know, MSBA and say, would you pay for a school if they approve? I don't know if they will on a preschool, but.
No, we're hoping maybe the new pre-K grants that come out will have some expansion, because it's, all the superintendents have been telling the state that, you know, we all want to, we all want to make more pre-K classes, but help us with the money to find the space.
Definitely. And then, so, are you, are you looking for a motion on that tonight, to bring it to the mayor?
No, I just think we, I think when we, when, next month, in March, when we develop the budget, I think we should make it as a request, we can talk about it with the mayor ahead of time, but we need to put it in the budget as a request to, as a new pre-K center, and by that time, we'll have all the, and present it as a budget item.
I mean, given the location of that, the Shaw School, you have mixed business and residential, whereas, I'm not sure, I, I always see, like, at the Howard School, they do a lot of training there, but that's just like right on a main road.
Oh, the one, yeah.
But I mean, the Shaw, yeah.
And that has a, that's like a little postage stamp.
Yeah, that's small.
Across from Wade.
Yes.
Yeah. That's small, this has a nice, it's, it's got a good-sized lot to allow for place pace and parking and things like that.
Yeah, that has all the inland, Howard, it's amazing how small that lot is.
I believe they still use it, though, for training, I, I don't know if it's for the fire.
Oh, they don't, because of the radon.
Oh, okay.
They have a very high level of radon in there.
Mr. Rodriguez?
You don't want to go in there.
Al, do you have any, you know, clear idea of, you know, how the infrastructure funds, I mean, there, is the city, what the city is getting, is, can that, I mean, obviously we make the request, as far as those funds being used for a school, because that is infrastructure?
I don't know, right, you're talking about the money that went to the county, then the county is going to give it up to us?
No, but the new bill through, on the federal level, that's going to flow in through the state, and then cities and towns.
Yeah, we haven't heard how that's going to come to the towns yet.
Hasn't got to.
No, hasn't.
Okay.
Yeah, because that's important, that's why I think it's important to bring back. Again, I'm not talking about paying them to do a new study, just, but we could, we have it, we would just have to have somebody like Angelo look at it, and then put new price tags on each.
Sure.
Arrow Street, they already done the blueprint.
Exactly.
Of exactly what every building needs, and it basically just needs to be updated, and they can come and do a quick presentation with, of everything they've done, but they were here for two years. I mean, it was a, what, five million dollar facility plan?
I forget, it was in the millions, I forget how much it was.
Three, maybe three, three million at least?
Yeah, I think it was two or three million.
Yeah, I mean, the book is this thick.
Yes.
I mean, I don't think we should reinvent the wheel, when the city paid three million for a facilities plan, and nothing's changed, it's not, the buildings are the same buildings.
Exactly.
It's not like, you know what I mean, the buildings are there, it's not like we built new ones.
Exactly, my understanding is that both on the federal and state level, there's still a lot of unspent funds, and so everyone's pushing to grab at this money. So it all depends, now that there's, you know, a new governor coming in, will they give it to the counties, will they give it just to the state, and the state will decide who gets it, will they run the money through the school systems to get money out, it's all up to the new governor and how they're going to handle it. So, again, my understanding is, because the federal government had all this money to give out, there weren't enough contractors to do all the work that they want to do with that money, so they couldn't spend it. So the question is.
A lot of it's still sitting there.
Right.
What about supply? I'm, I mean, I know that you did your research, but this would be great, is it something that we can get quickly, is it in supply, like, you know, especially with, everybody talks about how it's so hard to get materials, like, if we decide we want to do this, is it realistic for us to be able to get this pushed through and have it complete in a year and a half?
Very good question, they haven't, like I said at the beginning, quotes, but I didn't ask how soon.
Yeah.
Can you get the, the steel and the, the concrete?
Okay.
I mean, I see a lot of development in our neighborhood going in, and I don't see them have any issue or problems getting their supplies, but you're right, on a big steel, on a building like this with a lot of steel.
Yeah.
That's, that's an important question, so I'll find out on that.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody have any other questions?
I don't, I think the concrete's fine, because, I was down on eighteen near the Bridgewater State Prison, and they're putting some big.
Oh, yeah.
Some, either it's Amazon or something, but it's all, it's all concrete, the whole thing's concrete, and so I don't know how there's a, it can't be assured of concrete, because.
Maybe it's easier to get than steel.
Yeah, so, I mean, that thing is totally concrete everywhere. I was riding by there another, and I'm like, wow.
All right.
So I think that, I mean, if, good with, I think that would be a decent plan for us to explore.
I do, too. I do, too. I think that's absolutely something that we should explore, for sure. And that's a good idea, like, I mean, it is, it's a really good idea, it's a good idea with the space, the space metal building, and I, I think it's a good alternative, and it's a heck of a lot less than forty-four, forty-five million dollars, and it's, sounds like it's actually doable.
Well, you spend forty-four million dollars, and it's, it's nicer inside and it's up to date, but it's still an old building, it's a hundred and twenty-three-year-old building. After forty-three million dollars, it's still a hundred and twenty-three-year-old building.
Agreed.
And by the time it get done, it's a hundred and twenty-five-year-old building, so.
I know.
Plus the Shaw School abuts my, my center city, where I've been a member for thirty years.
Center city. God. Okay, does anybody have any questions in regards to the Shaw School? All right, moving on to other business, does anybody have any other business that they would like to bring up?
Um.
Mr. Rodriguez?
The Goddard School, I know that's a community center.
Yep.
As per se. Is that even, was that looked at, are we able to use classrooms there to bring the pre-K there temporarily?
The, no elevator. That's the issue, it's got, it has no elevator, and it's the same situation with that, no bathrooms, there's only one, there's only two sets of bathrooms.
The first floor really has, what, four classroom spaces, four, five spaces, including the main office, there's only four classrooms that we could use on the first floor, just only.
Because I know we approved for the elevator, I know that's been.
Yeah, well, we want to, we're going to put a lift there, not an elevator.
But that's for, it was built for the adults, right?
Really just a handicap access, you know, for the second floor, it's really not conducive to bring the students up and down.
Is it just built for adults or kids? I don't think it.
Right, exactly, enough, enough for kids necessarily, but, so they'd have to go up and down the stairs, you know, if they were going to.
Yeah, the bathrooms are an issue there.
Yeah.
But I think if we can work something out with the Port of Chester, if we can make that come to, I think we have some, I think we could have some really good opportunities to make, that would make sense.
That would provide us with repurposing other space.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, that was just a shuffle.
Yeah.
You're right, I mean.
Okay. Any other business, anyone wants to share?
Facilities, are we going to take that up on rentals? I know we got that in our package, do we want to just postpone that for another?
Yeah, it's got to go on the next agenda.
Next, uh, next meeting, because that's, that's a, that will probably be a lengthy discussion, that should be within itself.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll just put it on one, the one, that will be the only item.
Okay. And I'll work with Melinda on scheduling that next, so we can keep these going at a good clip and make some of these decisions and not slow down, does that make sense? Ms. Azak?
If we can add to, so, we received the facilities application, if we can add, can we get a list of who's renting the facilities? You know, we might have people that are renting them on a regular basis, and then we might have one-time renters, so, I know in years past, we've had, like, dance recitals, different things going on at the different schools, so can we get a printout of who's renting what schools? Because, again, we have to think about it, we're paying for electricity and heat, and depending what event is going at these schools, we might be able to just cut it down and say, okay, this is the middle school you can use if you want to rent it out, this is parts of the high school, I like, really see what's, what's, what's in demand, what are they out there looking for, as far as rentals?
Certainly.
So that'll help us better understand, like, you know, it's, we're not here, it's not really a moneymaker, but we also don't want to be losing money either, especially with the cost of electricity and heat and things like that, so, we just want to see, we don't want to be losing money. I mean, again, I know I sound like a broken record, but I, when I first came on the committee, we had no money. We have a little bit of money, but that's, you know, we don't know what's going to happen once all the money runs out in, what, twenty twenty-five? Twenty-four? Twenty twenty-four. So between, you know, the S R and SOAs, I mean, it's just, they're, they're running out. They're running out, so, we, you know, I've been through budget cuts where we were cutting a lot of things, so that's why a lot of our buildings are where they are, because we didn't have money. We have the opportunity to fix them, add them, you know, update, but as far as rentals, we want to make sure we're not losing money either, and that we utilize when it comes to rentals, you know, see, see which schools are popular, what are they renting, what's in demand out there.
By far, Brockton High School.
Yeah, definitely.
And just for example, when we, when I submitted the SOI, when we had the senior walk-through, and they asked for what the usage looked like at the high school, between September, and we did the walk-through in November, there were like thirty thousand rental usage for, for the high school. And, and that includes a lot of the night classes and, and other, you know, programs, the, the community schools, but by far, Brockton High School. Brockton High School is the most used city building, period, you know, for any, any event or anything else, it's almost twenty-four seven, but.
Definitely.
But, you know, the others are the middle school, the Compass Middle School that are very popular, and the, you know, the newer, the newer elementary schools, they are, they are known in, in those places, so, yeah, I can, I can get the printout for you.
Yeah, because the other thing is a safety thing, too, too, as well, you know, we have people coming in, they're renting our facilities, so we just want to make sure, like, who's going to do a sweep, and it's a safety issue. You want to control who's coming into the buildings, and make sure that they're limited to those areas, and not just have, you know, a free-for-all, like, be able to walk all over the schools and have access to everything, we have to keep our students safe, so I was just curious to see, as far as our rentals, I know the athletics is huge, as far as the fields and things like that.
And the gyms, the, the, the middle school gyms for basketball, we can actually, it's used quite a bit, the auditoriums.
Definitely, and then, and again, if, if, I know it's a lot of work to ask, but if someone can just gather that information, it'll help us better.
I can have Zalinda do the printout, it's easier to printout, we have a, we have a program that we can just designate a school.
Yeah, it's just, it better, it better helps us understand what we need to address, because we're going to have, you know, eventually we'll have work at the high school, so we're going to have to see other areas that, you know, if, if they're not going to be able to use the high school, we have to make, make other schools accessible, so, but thank you, if we could have that, and then, that's probably like one meeting in itself.
True.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Just to piggyback off Mrs. Azak, is Zalinda able to break down, like, her denials, like, let's say, for example, like, Maciano Stadium, like, within the, the last three years, how many rentals have we actually rented, and how many denials, because it's not available for rentals, you know, including the auditoriums as well, because our auditoriums get used around the clock, and I know, I mean, I, you know, as a, you know, renting facilities for years through BPS, I know I, I had to juggle around, because she's like, I don't have room, the, you know, the athletics, and then I have this group, I have that group, so there's not enough space to, to have rentals, so just to see, like, the number of, like, how many people, like, what we're losing out on.